... meeting of the Paris City Council's hereby called to order at 5:30 PM. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Invitation will be delivered by Mr. Gene Anderson and then followed by the United States Pledge and the Texas Pledge, which will be led by the City Council. Please rise.
May I re-pro? Heavenly Father, we know that we live in perilous times today and we just pray for your protection and your guidance and your direction so that we might do all things that you would have us to do, Father, in peace and safety. We pray for our council tonight as they conduct the city business and we just pray that you give them understanding and wisdom to do that and we just pray for our community that it might prosper under your guidance and direction. We pray for our state, we pray for our federal government, Father, that you would guide and direct them as well and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We are allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas, one nation, indivisible.
Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits a council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council members or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. Alyssa West. Do you need my address again?
Yes, address also.
Address 9922 Highway 24, 75462. I come before you again, hello, wonderful people, to ask for you guys to help us to join Roxton in a 391 commission to deal with all of the things that are coming to develop the land around us. We need help, we need to be able to have a citizen's voice for the solar, the wind, the batteries, the mining, the water, all the things that are coming. Currently, we're trying to deal with these batteries that are on their way. We've had a really great breakthrough where the legislature has limited the size of the batteries and so we have a little bit of time that we could get together, cities, counties, our water boards, all of these people can get together and we can actually have a voice to stand up to some of these corporations that are coming in. We're giving away tax revenue in droves to the wrong people. The pilot payments are not what they should be. We have $177,000 for thousands of acres of development. Doesn't seem like a lot, doesn't seem like it's actually helping and serving the people who live in our county. The 10,000 acres of development out at Mockingbird, $312,000 on a pilot payment. I'm sorry, but that doesn't seem like very much when they're making millions and millions of dollars. We have problems here in this county that yes, money could probably solve a lot of. We have poverty, we have all kinds of water issues, we have drainage issues, we have all sorts of things and we're giving away what could help our county. So, we're asking again for you guys to please join us in a 391 with Roxton. They've been brave to step out first and so I'm here on their behalf to ask again, third month in a row, somebody's come and asked about this, so please, guys, give us some thought. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Two minutes.
Is there anyone else? All right, I will now close the Citizens Forum. Moving on to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? If not, I'll hear a motion for approval.
I make a motion.
You got a motion? In a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Six-zero. All right, we will now move on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 13, discuss an act on a resolution approving and authorizing an economic development agreement and tax abatement agreement with Linda Cheney pursuant to the 505 Housing Infill Redevelopment Program. Mr. Almendza, do you have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council. So, this is the regular 505 program application and the applicant is Linda Cheney, who has applied for the Economic and Development Residential Tax Abatement Agreement under the 505 Housing Infill Program to build single-family dwelling, a total up to 10 separate units. Properties that are to be included in the abatements are El Card number 15428, El Card number 14832, El Card number 22185, El Card number 14933, El Card number 14993, El Card number 11026, El Card number 11152, El Card number 11154, El Card number 15229, and El Card number 15481. The applicant has gone through all the processes and the incentives under the chapter 380 Texas Local Government Code has been reviewed and are in conformance, also with the authority of the Texas Task Code, chapter 312. The notices that were required has been sent out for that 30-day requirement and all is in compliance and so the tax abatement will have a negligible budgetary impact as the abatement will only apply to the incremental value, to the taxable value attributable to the required improvements on otherwise undeveloped properties. Therefore, staff recommends adapting a resolution to approve the 505 agreement with Linda Cheney. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, is there any discussion? Any questions we have?
So, when, I think on some of these properties, they've already started development. They do that at their own risk, right? Because, of course, we haven't approved it yet, so they're going to go through with this whether we approve it or not, right? Because I think some of them have already started on Sixth Street.
Have any of the developments started on any of these properties in this agreement?
Are you talking of this one or some other?
Well, I think it's Sixth Street, I mean, Sixth Northeast, I mean, yeah, Northeast. It might not be the same properties, but I've just seen where some people have started and I know it's a 505 situation, so I was just wondering if they do it at their own risk, you know, assuming that we're going to approve.
No.
Just making sure we're not getting them to go ahead.
Well, we cannot grant a tax abatement if they've already started work on the property. So, if any of these turn out to have already begun, we need to find that out because we can't, they can't get a tax abatement on that particular property.
All right.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll, I'll hear a motion.
So, move.
We've got a motion in a second from Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to agenda item number 14, discuss an act on approval to participate in the new national opioid settlement regarding Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family and authorize the city manager to execute and submit the participation release form. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, I do and just so you know, 14 and 15 are actually duplicates, those are the same thing, so you won't have to do it twice. As you're probably all aware, the opioid crisis in this country has generated massive amounts of litigation. The city's previously elected to participate in litigation brought by the Texas Attorney General's Office as to several pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors, including Tev, I don't know how to pronounce, Teve, Janssen Indo, Walmart, Allergan, CVS, and Walgreens. We've recently been notified of a new settlement of national litigation involving Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family in connection with Purdue's bankruptcy pleadings. If you don't know Purdue, patented and marketed Oxycontin and members of the Sackler family both ran and owned a controlling interest in Purdue during the relevant time period. What we have to do if we are going to have any hope of participating in this is execute and return a participation in release form by September 30th. To participate, the city would have to forego and release any claims against Purdue and the Sackler family that we might have and we haven't brought any. One of the things that has been an issue in the previous ones that we've participated in, which to my knowledge, we haven't received any proceeds from, is those, the use of those funds was limited to opioid-related endeavors like education and addiction prevention, those sorts of things. There's nothing in this Purdue one that says that, but we'll find out more later and we don't know what we might receive out of this one. So, what we can do, should we determine that there are too many restrictions or requirements attached to acceptance of the settlement funds in the future, the city can decline to accept at that time, but to even have that opportunity to make that decision, we need to send this thing in by September 30th. So, we recommend that you authorize the city manager to do that.
Council, I want to open up the floor for any discussion, any questions we may have. I just want to say, this has been an awful situation that's touched so many around the country and globally and it's about time that we help to do something about it. I know that it's not just a Paris, Texas thing, but I know that people get addicted and it's a, it's a rough situation, so I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and helping us to move it forward.
Purdue is a particular bad actor in all of this, but yes, we need to go ahead and opt to participate in this and then see where it takes us.
Yes. So, with that being said, I'll hear a motion if there's one. Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Ellis.
Second.
Second from Ms. Normant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero. Seeing that agenda item number 15 was a duplication, that will be omitted and we will move on to agenda item number 16, discuss an act on two appointments to fill the vacancies on the Building and Standards Commission. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, after you all made appointments to the boards and commissions, we still had vacancies on Building and Standards, we had two vacant positions. So, we re-advertized, we received two applications. One is from, I can read my, Jesse Wallace Jr. and one is Morgan Klein. One of the applicants turned in their application late, but we went ahead and accepted it, let you all decide if you want to accept it since we only had two applications, or if you wanted to try to continue to re-advertise.
Council, any, any discussion? If not, any, any particular individual that we would want to move forward in this process?
You said we need one?
We need two.
Two.
And we have two applicants.
Oh, okay.
I thought one was, sorry, I thought one was.
I'm sorry, no, we have two. Initially, we had one and then somebody else resigned, so we actually have two and we re-advertized, we received one and then we received one late. But we felt like we needed to bring it to you all, let you make that decision if you want to go ahead and step to both of them, or if you wanted us to continue to try to re-advertise.
And that fills all of the vacancies then, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Well, you heard it. I think we're, this would fill all the vacancies and be done with it.
Make the motion that we accept the two that applied.
All right, we got a motion.
Second.
We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, six-zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to agenda item number 17, receive presentation from the city manager and interim finance director, discuss and provide direction on the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget for the city of Paris. And I know Ms. Beverly is coming down to the podium.
So, I have this presentation, it's going to be on the screen.
She's going to have it on the screen.
But I also have copies for you all if you, that you can take with you when you leave today, so that it kind of would be an update to the budget information that we gave you last time I was here. So, since I was here last, we have had some changes and things that have happened just in the past couple of weeks and you know, we're just moving along all the time and so I wanted to just go over the changes with you all. One of the things that came, came about is the police department software. So, they had that budgeted for this year to go in this fiscal year, but when I had the meetings with the fire department, we figured out that there was some issues with the software they had chosen, it wasn't really going to work for EMS and fire, so we had asked them to kind of go back to the drawing board a little bit and work with police and fire to pick the software. So, that will not be able to get done this fiscal year, so basically, we're just pushing that into next year. So, the public works, we have a water line extension from 271 in the loop. The crafts that came and they were asking for a disannexation, we were able to work with them because there were some issues with getting them a water line that we did not anticipate and of course, we all know that that really wasn't their fault, that they had to move from text dot with that expansion on the loop. So, basically, what we've decided with them is that strategically for us, we can move the water line and it's a really good move because it's going on property that's commercial on the loop. So, if we move that water line over or extend it out, I'm sorry, it'll be easy for them to bore under, they're still going to have to pay to connect, but now we've moved our water line in a very strategic way. So, it's actually a win-win for everybody. Of course, we did not grant them the disannexation, so they're still on city limits, so that's good as well. We have added the financial forecasting strategic plan. I think in our one-on-ones, I probably talked to all of you about that, just trying to figure out how we're moving forward with all of our plans, knowing that we're going into the red and I'll go into that here in a little bit down below. We have added in the tool revitalization plan update to engineering, but we also took out the bike lanes grant match because that was budgeted for this year and it got already expended this year, so we've already expensed that out. We don't need to carry it over. In general fund, one of the things that we didn't do that was in your original books that we gave you was a transfer debit for the airport fund. The airport fund will not be sustainable probably this year. I mean, it actually could with the way they're selling fuel, we don't know, but we're projecting that it won't be and so we will need to transfer some money from general fund into the airport fund to support them. But we also didn't credit the event coordinator from Hot Tex, so we have now put that into the numbers. So, those changes and then health insurance increase, we were still working with the health, with TML to try to figure out what their increase would be to us this year. We still don't have final numbers, so we just had to make our best guess. We're guessing an 8% increase and we're trying to absorb some of that because when we give our 2% COLAs to our staff, we don't want to come then behind it and take, basically zero that out with a big insurance rate increase to them. So, we currently contribute $650 per month, per plan, to our staff to help pay for the insurance and they have to cover the rest. We are proposing that we change that to a $50 per person, so it would go to 700 instead of 650. Like I said, trying to not take away their COLO with insurance increases. That would cost approximately 151,000 to the general fund and approximately 50,000 to the water sewer fund. All those changes, you guys had a top-level report on your, with your last binder, that would change now. The general fund revenue, we have coming in at 35,000, 35,467,000 and expenses at 37,569,000, leaving us going to project it in to reserves to cover at 2.1 million. So, water fund, I don't know how some of these got moved, they were, it saved, right, but it looks kind of funny now, so I'm sorry, I'll fix that for you all. But the water fund revenue is projected to come in at 22.3 million, the expenses at about 22 million and that's going to leave in the positive 351,000, which is really good because one of the things that's notable about our water fund right now, water sewer fund, is we're supposed to have reserves in, at port per policy, we don't have the reserves that we need. So, starting to kind of build that back into the rate so that we put some extra money into reserves for replacement and all the things that come up for expenses. The airport fund revenue is projected at 1.146 million, expenses the same and that includes a transfer that evens that out, that transfer for 93,700 from general fund. So, since we last talked, these are the changes that we entered into the numbers and this is where we're coming out. Now, what I need is guidance on whether to have some more workshops or if you all have some things that you want to talk about, to talk through before we finalize everything. I know that you all saw, I have the budget letter ready to go. We do have the tax, the proposed tax rate. It's at .47239 is the new proposed tax rate. The increase there is really from the debt service. So, and of course, we're taking the de minimis rate. Is what we have, actually, that's what we have recommended. You all have to decide if you're okay with that and then that's how this would turn out to be, so.
Any discussion, any, any questions? I believe you had asked about a potential workshop, any topics that we may want to discuss as a council that we feel are maybe pressing needs that we want to get answered? Or if we have any questions right now, we could even ask two, so.
I have one.
Yes.
The insurance, you said staff, that's all city employees, right?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll state this and I know this is not pertaining to this, this budget, but I know that it has been a heavy push from, from all parties and, you know, rest assured, even council, I believe, would feel the same way, but I know that our fire department has been needing a lot of, of kind of attention in regards to looking at pay and looking at insurance and, and, you know, equipment and there's been so many things and in support of them and I completely understand and I wanted to say, I commend you and your staff, Ms. Beverly, because what you guys have done is finally, we're starting to see some, some good expense come and along with the chief, you guys have worked hand-in-hand to figure out a way to try to push forward, so I appreciate that and just want to let you all know that we, we're very supportive of that, but hopefully in the near future, maybe next budget cycle, we'll get a chance to be able to look at these increases in wages. I know we're looking at pay studies and being able to balance, you know, balance everything and really forecast.
Yeah.
So, I commend you for that because I don't think that we've really ever done that as a city, as crazy as that sounds, but you're really bringing some tools that we've been needing for quite some time and unfortunately, we've been behind, but you know what, we're going to catch up and it's just going to take some time, so I just wanted to let you know that, that I appreciate that, but I wanted to say that for all of our citizens also that have had that same concern, that this is not lost on us and we're not new to this, this concept. We really want to make sure that we work as a team for the betterment of all of our first responders and not just them, but all city staff. So, it all matters.
Yeah, and in, in the agenda today, we did pass the, there was permission for me to work with Nugent, who does our rate studies, to look at financial forecasting, which is very impactful to our budgets as we go forward, trying to figure out where we're headed and how if we're going, we know we're going probably not in the best direction right now, but what we need to do and the suggestions are right now, but what we need to do, and the suggestions they're going to come up with, so that we can present you all that information to fix it, so that we can work with our staff and try to keep them, and try to actually use that pay study that we get and make it effective, because right now, it'd be really hard to put that stuff into place. What we could do right now was the insurance, the 2% COLA, and trying to, you know, balance that a little bit, so that it doesn't just get wiped out immediately by the increase in insurance. Lucky for us that they did tell us that the increase, and sometimes, they're not always accurate, but they feel very comfortable saying TML did that, the increase would be less than, would be single digits.
Good.
Which is less than it has been in years past.
I saw in last year's budget that we contracted with Charles Worth Consulting to look at group insurance plans. Did anything come of that that looked more affordable, or?
Since I wasn't here, it's hard for me to answer that, but I did ask the same question, so I couldn't give you an answer like somebody who was here could.
Sure.
But I will say that TML came out far and above the best, from what they told me.
Okay.
Yeah. That is a good question. And it was suggested, I think, in the budget letter to do it again, which we probably will next year.
What explains the increase in the water revenue? I mean, that we're coming out ahead, is it?
Yes.
Just for charging more?
No. Well, yeah, that too. I mean, we, as you know, every year, we look at our rates, and so we have fixed, we have to increase the rates or decrease based on that. Of course, we have an increase to help take care of the debt service, but one of the things that Jean explained to me was that last year, we had to pay some upfront heavy debt service payments, and since we did that upfront, this year, that went down, and that helped us to come out a little bit ahead for the upcoming year.
No, and I'm, thank you for getting Next Gen, putting that as part of our budget. I do think that the forecasting, we need really clear guidance. You know, we have some big-ticket items that we want to make sure that we're going to be fiscally responsible for, and with any of these rates, we just want to have some transparency, so.
Yeah.
I very much appreciate that.
Thank you, and as we go along, of course, we will be transparent with the taxpayers. We just, we need them to understand where we're at in every step of the way.
Does that, so I want to ask a question again. Is there anything in particular that we would like to have as a council for a workshop, a special budget workshop? Or it maybe, it might even be a good idea, maybe just to reserve a time slot in case, if we have any questions, we call that meeting, and then if we don't really have anything, then we can always say, hey, we're not, no need for it. Would that be an okay?
You just have to post 72 hours in advance, so you can't wait till the last minute to decide we need to meet.
Perfect.
Yeah, and we can do that. I can post a meeting, and then if you all decide you want to have one, we will, and if you don't, if you're comfortable with things now, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, you know, as we look more and have more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just pencil it in. If we don't need it, then we won't use it.
That sounds like a great plan.
Awesome.
A lot of material to look at. I know you've been looking at it all the time, but we're...
Yes, I think that's a good direction, and also, I think that, you know, as we dive in, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be more questions and more anticipation for the upcoming years, and at least we've now got a good understanding. We're not just shooting from the hip and going one year at a time, but we're really trying to look at, hey, how are we going to be positioned years in advance, so.
Exactly.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then we'll, you know, just moving down on our budget timeline, that's where we're at. We're right on track, so we will schedule a workshop, and we'll just see how, if you guys need anything in that, we'll be ready for you. So, if you do, if any of you do decide you want to participate in the workshop, as you work through your information, please let me know the topic, so that I can make sure we, if we need, you know, some backup information, that I have it ready, so. And that's all I have, and I'll give you guys a handout with the updates as well, the changes, not just on the screen, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, but we will now move on to agenda item number 18, consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything? I had two quick items that I wanted to see if we could look at. I know we've already got one in action for the next meeting, for an update with the fire department, and having a good, open dialogue and discussion on that, so we've got that, but also, I wanted to see if we could have a good discussion, maybe partnering with TexDOT on this item, but looking at the option of no littering signs throughout their right-of-way, their easements, and then also in conjunction with ours, and just seeing, hey, how can we look at this from a different scope, and look at it, you know, no littering, and kind of keeping our community a lot cleaner, maybe having some signage for penalty, or something of that nature. Anyone else?
No, I think that's a great idea, because I was thinking that same thing, like Barney Fife, but anyway, but I was, I had thought the same thing. I think, I think when Texas came out with the Don't Mess With Texas, I think that was very effective. People still litter, but I think that was effective. It made people conscious of what they were doing, so I believe that signage or something, you know, just discuss it, come up with ideas.
Yes. All right. If there's nothing else, then we will go to agenda item number 19, per adjournment.
So move.
All right, we got a motion in a second from Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero.
Yes.